Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Seminole School Board Leasing Corporation for the meeting March 15th, 2016. Let the record reflect that the following school board members are in attendance. Member Bauer, Member Almond, Member Schaffner, Member Calderon. Member Lockhart is absent due to an unexpected death and her immediate family. We send our sympathies to them as well. At this point in time, I'd like to move on to the approval of the minutes. Board members, have you all had the chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. At that point in time, I would now like to entertain a motion to-
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin, do we have any new business?
Yes, I do. Madam Chair, that the Seminole School Board Leasing Corp. adopt Resolution 2016-01, authorizing the advance refunding of all or a portion of the certificates of participation, Series 2009-A, and the execution of documents in connection therewith.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second at this point in time. Mr. Kelly, would you like to address the board regarding this recommendation?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have with me today Jay Glover from PFM, our financial advisor, and Bob Gang from Greenwood-Torreg. And I've asked Jay to come up and present some of the details since he really is the- he and Bob are the brains behind this refunding. So Jay-
Good evening, Mr. Glover.
Madam Chair, School Board Member Superintendent Jay Glover from Public Financial Management, the district's financial advisor. One of the aspects of our job is to monitor the district's outstanding debt portfolio and occasionally bring to you refunding opportunities to lower the annual debt service payments. And we've done that quite frequently over the last few years. This particular transaction is proposed to be issued to advance refund the outstanding 2009-A certificates of participation, which are callable July 1 of 2019 at par. In order to take advantage of this opportunity, we solicited proposals from financial institutions about a month ago, and we received five proposals with Bank of America Merrill Lynch providing the lowest cost and most favorable terms to the district. We actually had a conference call with them yesterday pending today's meeting, and they agreed to hold a rate of 2.24 percent pending approval today. And if you all approve this item, we will actually execute a rate lock agreement to hold that interest rate through a closing date of April 4th of 2016. Based on that 2.24 percent rate, we estimate the district would save $1.14 million on a net present value basis, which is net of all the cost of issuance of doing the transaction. This equates to 9.14 percent of the refunded bonds par amount. And I mention that percentage because most municipalities, local government, school district, set a minimum target to be achieved to move forward with the refunding. And 5 percent of the refunded bonds par amount is the normal target people try to achieve because you really only get one bite of the apple to refund an outstanding transaction. And again, this one is estimated to save 9.14 percent. So well in excess of the minimum parameter we'd look to save. One other aspect of the transaction I'll mention is, we take the savings annually over the life of the deal, and those are estimated to be about $90,000 annually through 2029, which is the existing final maturity of the transaction. So we're not extending the maturity, we're just taking it over the useful life of the deal, which is 2029. And again, it's net of all costs of doing the transaction. So assuming approval today, we would execute the rate lock agreement tomorrow, and we would plan on closing April 4th of 2016. I'll also point out that you might recall that about this time last year, you all approved a forward transaction to lock in savings based on favorable markets at that time. And that transaction is actually scheduled to close on the same day, April the 4th of this year. So we locked that rate a year ago and closing it at the same time. And there's some tax reason why we had to do that, what I won't get into today unless you'd like me to. But that transaction is estimated to save about $3 million on a net present value. So when you combine this transaction with that transaction and two others that we did in 2014 and 2015, we've actually lowered the district's debt service payments by about $6.3 million on a net present value basis. So obviously, it's good proactive work on your part and your staff's part to take advantage of these opportunities. And we would recommend approval of the financing here today. And I can address any questions you all might have.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Any questions, board members? Seeing none, thank you for your time. We appreciate you coming out tonight. Board members pursuant to Florida State Statute, Section 112.3143, and to avoid even the appearance of a conflict, I am abstaining from this vote as it may give special gain or loss to a relative of mine. So thank you for that understanding. Seeing no further discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And I will abstain. So let the record reflect that, Madam Clerk. And at this point in time, the Leasing Corporation meeting is concluded. Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the School Board of Seminole County's School Board Meeting for March 15th, 2016. And I'm the lucky person to have the invocation and pledge of allegiance this evening. And knowing that March stands for within our keys for our character, knowledge, I thought I would share some knowledge with the audience this evening. If this school board does approve our consent agenda tonight, there is a proclamation enclosed within that I'd like to share with everyone at this time. Proclamation of the School Board of Seminole County proclaiming the month of April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Seminole County, Florida. Whereas all children deserve to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment to ensure they reach their full potential, and whereas safe and healthy childhoods help produce confident and successful adults, and whereas child abuse and neglect often occur when people find themselves in stressful situations without knowing how to access community resources and not knowing how to cope, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure that every family has the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment, and whereas no person can do everything, but everyone can do something, and together we can create change for the better. And whereas the Seminole County Child Abuse Prevention Task Force has worked together with numerous Seminole County organizations to increase public awareness to the need to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of our children, and whereas in their efforts to increase public awareness during 2015, the Seminole County Child Abuse Prevention Task Force conducted a campaign about the dangers of co-sleeping, developed printed and distributed copies of the resource directory, conducted community walks that distributed resources in areas identified with high incidence of child abuse, and conducted the Pin Wheels for Prevention campaign with displays of pinwheels throughout the county. And whereas the Seminole County Child Abuse Prevention Task Force will recognize the Seminole County Sheriff's Office Child Protective Services Division for their outstanding work in child protection with an annual breakfast event on April 20th, 2016, and whereas wearing blue or displaying pinwheels in April will serve as a positive reminder that together we can prevent child abuse and keep children safe. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Seminole County, Florida, that we do hereby proclaim April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Seminole County. Thank you for your attention at this point in time. Would you please rise for the pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much. Madam Clerk, please let the record reflect that Member Bauer, Member Almond, Member Schaffner, and Member Calderon are in attendance for our school board this evening. Member Lockhart unfortunately is not here due to an unexpected death in her family, and we wish her and her family our condolences. I'd also like to recognize some people who have joined us in the audience this evening. Mr. Steve Brown with our Business Advisory Board, thank you for being here. Sue Carson, our SEA President, thank you for being here. Rosie Guido, Human Resources President of SICA, thank you for being here. Sandra Maldonado-Ross with Lake Mary High School Vice President of SEA. Nan James with Spring Lake Elementary, Seminole Education Association Secretary. Donna Miller, Vice President, Orange County Classroom Teachers Association. Robert Agudnina, Lake Howell High School. Carl Kubey, Millennium Middle Union Rep. Jacqueline Riley, Oviedo High School. Don Smith, Lake Brantley High School, SEA. Leah Wiseman, Lake Howell High School, SEA. Thank you all for your attendance here this evening. Dr. Griffin, do you have any agenda modifications?
There are three items, Madam Chair. The addendum for good cause is marked on our electronic agenda by a green flag named addendum item. I'm also pulling two items. I'm pulling Item 4H Amendment 1 to the self-funded administrative services contract with Cigna Health and Life Insurance. And also pulling Item 4AM, this is an MOU with the Florida Department of Health, Seminole County.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any items for removal or clarifying questions? Member Schaffner?
No.
Member Bauer?
No, thank you.
Member Almond?
No, thank you.
And I don't either. Seeing that, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the agenda outline.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin, do we have any presentations?
Yes, we do. Please join me in the front.
Board members, we would like to recognize Samantha Waterson from Evans Elementary. Samantha here? Well, I will share Samantha's recognition. Samantha Waterson from Evans Elementary was selected as the 5th grade state essay contest winner on Saturday, March 19th. She was recognized by the Florida State Society of Daughters of the American Revolution as part of this annual state conference at the essay awards ceremony. She will receive a certificate, a medal, and a check for her essay. She will now advance in the competition to the Southeast Regional Competition. If selected, her essay will then compete for national recognition. The Daughters of the American Revolution Essay Contest was established to encourage young people to think creatively about our mission's great history and learn about history in a new light. This year's essay was entitled "A Colonial Family's Reaction to the Stamp Act." So can we all give Samantha Waterson from Evans a round of applause?
Dr. Griffin and board members, we have some athletes from our winter sports season to be recognized tonight. First, we'd like to recognize a student athlete from Lake Mary High School. Please welcome Judith Manduano Rodriguez. Congratulations to Judith, who won the Florida High School Athletic Association Girl's Individual State Weightlifting Championship in her weight class. She had a very impressive 195-pound bench press and a 205-pound clean and jerk for a 400-pound total. This ties for the second highest total ever for the Florida High School Athletic Association in her weight class in state history. With her tonight are her coach, Pat Barrett, her athletic director, Mr. Doug Peters, and her principal, Mike Kotkin. Next up, we have a group of young ladies who have been here before. They are creating quite a dynasty in girls soccer over at Oviedo High School. Let me tell you a little bit about their team accomplishments. This year, they had a 21-2 record with 15 shutouts in those 23 games. They scored 95 goals where their opponents scored 12 total the entire season. The road to the Final Four State Series included the following wins. They beat rival Lake Mary in the district championship, 1-0, followed by a 5-0 victory over West Orange. Then they had a rematch against Lake Mary in the regionals, beat 'em again, 1-0. Handled Beuholtz from Gainesville 2-0. Went to the state semifinal where they beat Vero Beach High School 2-0. And in the state championship game, they beat Lord's Academy from Miami 3-1, scoring three goals in the first five minutes, completely dominating that game to secure the win. You may have noticed before the meeting, the coach and I were up here scrambling around. He thought I had the roster, and I thought he had the roster. So, like a good coach, from memory, he wrote down the entire roster. So, girls, if I make any mistakes, it's coach's fault. Here they are. Girls, come on up when you're introduced. Lauren Day, Erin Michelson, Jacqueline Zepay, Tessa Simmons, Maddie Bazaco, Andrea Muschil, Alex Nowak, Avery Nowak, Kenna Hildebrand, Sarah Preston, Sarah Carbone, Peyton Graywall, Samantha Blanford, Carly Mitchell, Maddie Allen, Reagan Massey, Camille Coppertheit, Brianna Wagner, Sidney Brown, Ally DeRose, and Katie Edwards. Just a couple more things. Coach, just come on up with the girls, please, Coach. Also with them are Coach Scott Weisenen and Coach Barker, and their principal, Mr. Joe Tribas is here as well. Board members, as our superintendent is doing his job organizing the students for the picture, you'll need to know that this is Oviedo High School's girls soccer team, third state championship title in the last six years. And they have made the- they have made the Final Four in soccer, six out of the last nine years, with three state championships and two runner-up. Congratulations, girls soccer team, Oviedo High School.
Good evening, Dr. Griffin and board members. I have the distinct honor and great privilege of being the district coordinator for positive behavior support in our county here in Seminole. My name is Maureen Dobbins, and we have some fantastic educators and some positive behavior support teams to recognize tonight. They've worked long and hard to achieve this goal of model school that they're going to be awarded. Positive behavior support is a multi-tiered system of support. It's in combination with MTSS. It's the application of evidence-based strategies and systems to assist schools to increase academic performance, increase safety, decrease problem behavior, and establish positive school cultures. Seminole County Public Schools began training schools under this project 12 years ago. Currently, we have 60 trained positive behavior support schools in our county. Several Seminole County schools are being presented with the Model School Award this year for the 2014-2015 school year. A PBS-MTSS model school is one that has met specific criteria and has reported innovative, creative, and functional ways of supporting positive behavior support in their school, and are operating their PBS and MTSS programming with fidelity. The PBS-MTSS project awards at three levels, bronze, silver, and gold status. Bronze-level schools have developed innovative, creative, and functional ways of implementing Tier 1 PBS that set them apart from other schools at the Tier 1 level. Silver-level model schools drill down into their data and ensure that their Tier 1 system is effective for all groups of students, and have taken steps to build systems of support for behavior. At Tier 2, a silver model school award is presented tonight to Castleberry Elementary. Please come forward. We have the entire team from Castleberry Elementary this evening. We have Principal Sharon Stanley, Assistant Principal Rebecca Wagner, PBS Coach Pam Metzger, Kristen Brilliant, Nancy Lanferseek, and Gary Lowe. Congratulations, Castleberry Elementary. They'll be getting their PBS banner, and they'll be getting a plaque, and they'll be able to put that on their website as a great accomplishment at Castleberry Elementary. We have another school tonight that is going to receive a silver model school award for the very first time. They've worked long and hard at Hagerty High School. If you'll please come forward, their team is also here. Their principal, Dr. Mary Williams, Nick Hurley, Jacob Del Rosario, Sina Imani, Tanya Imani, Brittany Campbell, Doreen Roloff, Nellie Montcalvo, Jonathan Rodriguez, Terry Cupsel, and Grace Wilken Yoder. Gold-level model schools report all of the characteristics of the bronze and silver-level schools. They implement with the highest levels of fidelity, and have developed systems of support at Tiers 2 and Tier 3. Gold-level schools exceed their peers in both the quality and depth of implementation across all three tiers of support. Gold-level awards this evening are being awarded to, first up, Crystal Lake Elementary. Present for them is Principal Christie Marshall, Assistant Principal Ryan Gard, Guidance Counselor Stephanie Wright, Teacher of the Year nominee Chris Pomboño, Ann Kucon, and Amy Moore. Congratulations, Crystal Lake. They already have a banner. They'll be getting a sticker to go on the banner that they have for their gold level. This is the third year consecutively that Crystal Lake Elementary has won the gold Did I sound partial? Next up, we have another gold-level school that is repeating in this capacity, and that's Lake Brantley High School. Principal Mike Cadro, Jerilee McIntyre, Coach Shauna Resnick, Brian Keys, Amy Jones, and Sonia Lenhoff. Congratulations, Lake Brantley High School. We also have the Employee of the Year with us here tonight as part of their PBS team. Mr. Ramos, we're so thankful to have him here as well. Congratulations, Lake Brantley High School. We have another gold model school this year. This time, it's a middle school. They've worked really hard for this recognition, and they're really proud. The entire team also is here tonight to receive their award. From Laton Child's Middle School, come on down. Assistant Principal Diane Taylor, Dean Frank Todd, Cheryl Zakowski, who is the coach facilitator, Nancy Mettowick, I'm sorry if I said it wrong, team leader, Amy Bramblett, Lauren Alseth Rupp, Gina Deschino, John McClary, Sarah Goodman, and Arthur Bond. Ms. Linda Mummy, the principal is also here from Laton Child's Middle School. Sorry, left her out. I'm in trouble. Congratulations, Laton Child's. We have two more schools that are stepping up to change the culture at their school by participating in positive behavior support. This time, we have another middle school, Milwee Middle School. Come on down. We have Principal Jen James Cubus, Courtney Conway, Louis Alvarado, and Nancy Mason-Halder. These schools all already have a banner. They'll be getting a sticker for their banner that designates that they are now a gold-level In a solid gold county. Congratulations, Milwee Middle School. Last, but definitely not least, we have the folks here from Spring Lake Elementary receiving a gold model school award this year. We have Principal Naomi Kuniac and Meg Anderson, PBS coach. Congratulations, Spring Lake Elementary. I'd like to congratulate all our positive behavior support model schools. I know that I've been out on the street visiting all the schools, and there's many more schools that will be applying for next year. So we look forward to seeing you all back here as well.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Griffin. We have a new administrator at Wicklow Elementary School, Kristy Bonstadt. Would you come on down? Kristy has worked for Seminole County Public Schools for 16 years, even though she doesn't look like it. She has a bachelor's in science degree in early childhood education, a master's in educational leadership from the University of Central Florida, and she has been a kindergarten teacher, a first-grade teacher, an educational technology facilitator, a reading coach, and a school administration manager. Congratulations, Kristy. With her tonight is her husband David, her son Reed, and her mother Barbara Perici. Why don't you all stand up so we can recognize you as well?
Chairman and Superintendent School Board Members, I have some really great news to share with our partner, CFE Federal- share with our partner, CFE Federal Credit Union. The program is My CFE for Schools. It's a partner program. Again, this year, we got some earnings from them, a large amount I'm really excited to share. And here's how the program works. Every time a member uses his or her My CFE for Schools debit card for purchases and signs for the transaction, five cents are set aside to benefit our school district. And in 2015, those combined transactions resulted in $17,400 earned for the foundation. Very excited about that. I'd like to invite the CFE team to come up and present the check for the earnings to the school board and superintendent. Joining us are CEO Joe Melbourne, Senior Vice President Kevin Miller, and Marketing Specialist We thank you, CFE. We appreciate your longtime partnership with our school district and with the foundation.
Good evening, Mr. Kelly.
Good evening, Chairman Calderon, Dr. Griffin, and members of the board. I've been asked to do a presentation. I think it's really timely to do it now because we're entering into the budget season, and we're coming into our last year of the millage. So, Dr. Griffin is asked that I provide an overview of the voted taxes that this district enjoys now. They've been a real benefit to us. And I thought, I do presentations, as some of you know, I do presentations around the county whenever I can find someone who wants to listen to me talk. And I always like to give, when I have the opportunity, the background of why we got to where we are now. And really what happened is, as everybody knows, we had the recession, and there's been a lot of publicity about how hard hit our operating budget was. And it was hit hard. I think it was, you can see that last bullet on this page, it was 13.3% funding per student reduction. That was a tremendously difficult hit for us to absorb, beginning 2007, '08 through the 2011, '12 year. I've gone back and looked at the files, and I can't imagine what you and the administrative team went through to deal with that. But one of the other areas that got hit even harder, and we don't talk about it as much as our capital budget, which is one of the reasons why I'm so happy when we can bring forward opportunities like we had today to save money of the capital budget by refunding debt. The cuts in the capital budget hit us in two different ways. First, we did have a precipitous decline in property values. Secondly, the legislature was concerned about the state of the economy, and during the recession, they were trying to find ways to help citizens. And one of the ways they helped decide to do it, which really made it tough on us, was by reducing the millage rate we could levy for capital. For many years, the capital millage rate has been two mills. And that rate's used to pay the debt service, like on the cops, we use it to buy buses, and we use it to maintain our 10 million square feet of buildings. So, the legislature over a two-year period of time cut that tax rate by 25%. So, between 2008 and 2011, our property taxes and the capital projects fund were down by 40%. That's an annual amount they were down. On top of that, the 10-year tax that the, once an infrastructure tax that we had shared with Seminole County and the cities, which we collected a quarter percent, just like we do now, had expired. And the Board of County Commissioners, too, was trying to decide what was in the best interest of the taxpayers. So, they elected not to renew that tax. The school district, we understood, I wasn't here then, but looking back through the papers, it was very clear why they did that, but it did not lessen what we were facing, which again is a 10 million square foot of facilities, with no ability to renew, replace roofs, repair air conditioners, do all the things you have to do for that many square feet of facilities. So, we went out for a half-cent sales tax, just as in Belushi, we'd gone for a half-cent sales tax. Unlike Belushi, it didn't pass. I think it was short by, what, 900 votes? A very, very close vote. So, against that backdrop and that background, the district decided to do something which I consider a little unusual, and that is they elected to go out for a millage. And what made it unusual was, the typical referendum for millage would be something along the lines of one mill for four years. Four years is the amount allowed in the statute. Instead, what this district elected to do, and attempt to be responsible to taxpayers, was up to one mill for each of four years. It was a tough place to put yourselves as elected officials, but that's what you voted to do. So, that was adopted, and that millage was designed to do three things. Although I think at the time, the biggest thing would have been the third item on this list. First was preserve A-rated academic vocational arts and athletic programs. Second was retain highly qualified teachers. And third was repair and maintain school buildings. At the time, one of the things that we talked about a lot, and it was something we were very mindful of, was the requirement that we don't put ourselves in a situation where we made commitments that we would have a difficult time keeping once the four-year tax expired. So, now, here we are, the last year of this four-year tax is coming up, and I'm happy to say that we have very few recurring expenditures in that millage. Now, one of the commitments we made, and I'm happy to talk about this, in both the millage and the sales tax, was that we were going to be completely transparent. And part of that effort was to appoint a budget review committee, and I think Keith has left now, which is too bad. They were appointed in 2012, and it was their job to make recommendations on our budget and budgetary practice. And in my meetings with them, I don't just talk about the millage, we talk about everything to do with the budget. We go over the operating budget, we talk about the capital budget, and we talk about the referendum millage budgets. And they gave us very good insights. One of the things they've told me, and which is one of the reasons why I do as much speaking as I do now, is, Bill, you need to get out there more. People don't understand your finances, and they don't understand the restrictions that you operate under. The committee members are all independent of SCPS. I met with one committee member, and after talking with him, one that wanted to be on, I had to tell him that he didn't qualify because he wasn't independent. We really worked hard to make sure these committee members all are independent of us, to have no business relationship with us, and they continue that to this day. And it consists of five community business leaders, they're financial professionals, and I coordinate the meetings. Now, when you look at the next slide, it's going to appear to you that one of them's not a financial professional, but he has a most unusual background, I'll tell you about that in a minute. The committee's existence will be up to four years, although I must admit, I do find their advice helpful, and I'm considering asking them to continue to provide advice to me. The members on the next slide, which I think I need to move forward, I apologize, I forgot I was having to do this. They are Jason Edwards. He's a managing partner for Edwards Financial Services. They have offices in Florida and New York. The next one is Rabbi Maurice Caprow. Rabbi Caprow is a former Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum. He was also in charge of the nationwide budget for the Chaplain Service and Military Service. He has a very unique background, and he is now, as you can see, he's in the process of obtaining his EDD, an Ed Leadership. He brings a very interesting perspective to us. Joe McLaren is on the committee. His title is Director of Special Districts. I know Joe, I've known Joe for years. He works with Fish, Kind and Associates. He is an attorney, that's his training, but most of his work is in the financial area. He manages community development districts throughout the state of Florida. Of course, Kevin Miller, who just came up to present a check. Kevin is very well-known in this district. And finally, Damon Ventura, somebody I didn't know and I've come to rely on. He's a Director of Finance and Accounting at Lake Nona Management Company, and he's a CPA. He's a guy that checks every document I give him, lets me know if there's something wrong with it, which I appreciate that, too. Now, one of the things that we did in this process was we tried to find a way to provide a guarantee to the public that everything we were doing with the millage would be transparent. There would be a place for them to see what was going on. We would maintain very strict separation of accounting for the millage. And the way we did that was we created what I call Fund 101. That doesn't mean anything to anybody outside of a finance guy, but I thought it was catchy. No one has agreed with that since, so I'll never make it in marketing. What that represents is a separate fund, just like the general funds are funded, the capital projects have their funds, debt service funds. We create a separate fund, a separate self-balancing set of accounts for the referendum project to account for the assets, liabilities, if any. There aren't any. Fund balance, revenues, and expenditures. In addition, we created a millage referendum webpage, which we've maintained since the millage was approved, and we have the link there to that page. What those pages do is provide a description of all the projects funded by the millage and the amounts that are being spent. We were fortunate that the sales tax passed January 1st of 2015. I believe that's right. Or, no, I think it was May of 2015, wasn't it? And the sales tax was an infrastructure sales tax where we shared a 1% sales tax with the county and the cities, and our share just as before was 25 cents. I think I mentioned this to you before, but I think it bears repeating, that the funds must be used for fixed capital expenditures, so that'd be construction, reconstruction, or improvement of public facilities, land acquisition, land improvement, design and engineering costs, and to buy vehicles and equipment. Now, in the case of vehicles and equipment, we're looking at assets that have a five-year life or longer. So, considering, our buses certainly wouldn't qualify, except buses are specifically excluded in our referendum. And the first full year was effective January 1st of 2015. So, for us, our fiscal year is July to June, so the year we're in now, the fiscal year is ending June, will be the end of our first fiscal year. And just as before, we do have a link to the sales tax on our website. One of the things that's been a challenge for me, because I made it too complicated, was trying to find an easy way to report the finances of the sales tax. So, after talking with Dr. Griffin, he pointed out the obvious. This financial statements I give you monthly, the one on sales tax would be really a great document to put on the website, so that's what we've done. So, on the next page, I'm going to show you, beginning of the next page, that document that we've now posted to the website, and we'll be updating each month. And what this top, this page reports is the revenue we've collected this year, which is $6.6 million so far. Budgeted $16 million. Then on the next page, these are the expenditures so far this year for Goldsboro Elementary, Seminole High, Winter Springs High. You can see the list going down. We budgeted $15.2 million. We spent $4.2 million of it so far, and we have $10.9, almost $11 billion yet unspent. So, that is my presentation on the voted taxes, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Board Members, any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Kelly, for your time.
Thank you.
And Dr. Cody, an update on Florida Standards Assessment data, please. Never mind. The other, Dr. Cody.
Good evening, Dr. Griffin and Board Members. Before we start, just talking a little bit about school grades, I just wanted to give you just a really brief update on FSA ELA writing. The window closed last Friday. Things went extremely well. The kids and all the test administrators reported a very smooth experience for us. I want to thank members of my team that are here. Sarah Borowski is here, and Colleen Reisner, who really coaches schools through administering the test. We gave over 16,500 computer-based writing tests in about, mostly a five-day period where most of the schools were fully engaged. So, we had a really positive experience at our schools. We just wanted to talk with you this evening, just as a reminder, that school grades were released not too long ago for 2015, and kind of go over some of that information with you, and answer any questions you have, and also kind of preview for you the changes that will be a part of the school grades formula based on the current testing that we're in as we ready for the summer of 2016. So, Caitlin Trippity is going to go through the presentation with you, and then we'll answer any questions you may have for us.
Good evening.
Good evening. First, we're going to start with reviewing the 14-15 school grades. The school grades in 14-15 were actually based on three components, so I'm just going to remove the bottom part. They were based on ELA achievement, math achievement, and science achievement. It's a total of 300 points possible. For 14-15, the learning gains were not included. In middle school, again, the learning gains were not included, so they were based on five components, a total of 500 points. ELA, math, science, social studies, which is the civics EOC assessment, and then acceleration success, which is just the percentage of students who pass high school EOCs and industry certs. High school, again, the learning gains were not included, so I'm just going to remove those. High school is based on six components, which is 600 total points. ELA, math, science, which is the biology 1 EOC, and social studies, which is the US history EOC. High school also has two other components that are actually lag data. So, there's a 13-14 graduation rate, that's the overall federal four-year graduation rate, and then also 13-14 acceleration success, which is actually based on the graduates of the 13-14 school year, and that is the percent of students that earn college credit in AP, IBAs, dual enrollment, or industry cert. And we also receive a district school grade, which also doesn't have learning gains. That is also based on, pretty similar to the high school school grades, except it also adds in the middle school acceleration component as well. In 14-15, the state set new cut points for what's considered an A through an F grade. An A is 62% and above, a B is 61 to 54%, a C would be 41 to 53, a D would be 32 to 40, and an F would be a 31% and below. In 14-15, we had 63% of our schools earn an A, a 21% earn a B, 12% earn a C, 4% earn a D. We had one special center that had an F, and the Seminole County Virtual School is being appealed for the percent tested denominator, which we have submitted to the DOE, and it should be approved sometime this, hopefully soon, hopefully before 15-16 grades come out. And Seminole County Public Schools was rated an A-rated district. Now, we're just going to switch to talk about what's going to be added into the 15-16 school grades. So, if you look at elementary, the red box shows that learning gains are now included. So, there's learning gains associated with ELA and math, and there's also learning gains for the lowest 25% of the students that is also included, which makes it a 700 points possible. Again, with middle school, adding in the learning gains adds additional points, which would be about 900 points possible in middle school. And high school is now at 1,000 points possible with adding the learning gains. And again, the district is also at 1,000 points possible adding in learning gains. Is there any questions about the school grades model?
Ms. Solomon?
If you look at any subcategory on any of the models, is there a maximum or a minimum, like the 0 to 100%, if you went below something, would that kick you out? Or is it definitely overall across the board when you do a school grade or a district grade?
The DOE removed all bonus points or negative consequences to dipping below any certain point. So, the points you earn are the points you get, and there's nothing that will really knock you out to drop you a letter grade or any bonus points that would, you know, inflate scores.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions? No? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation for the consent agenda?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. That the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Student discipline hearing dispositions. Dr. Griffin?
That the School Board of Seminole County approved the student disciplinary recommendations from February 9th, 2016, February 16th, 2016, and February 22nd, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Board Member Committee comments. Member Schaffner, were there any committees you attended on our behalf?
Yes. As a reminder, too, the Seminole County District-wide Teacher of the Year event is going to be held this Thursday, and we've been working very hard to make this a very special event. The foundation works with community involvement, and we are going to be announcing at that event. The... event, the Seminole County Teacher of the Year. And it will be one of the three. We have a high school, a middle school, and an elementary school teacher there, and one of those three will be our district-wide teacher of the year and will represent us at the Florida Teacher of the Year event that's going to be held in June. So that's mainly what I've been doing, is working on Teacher of the Year.
Great. Well, thank you for your service there. Member Bauer.
Yes, I attended the Calno meeting, and we had a presentation from the FDOT on the I-4 Ultimate Project, which was illuminating to me because I didn't realize it was going to take another six years for it to be done.
The joy.
It's 27 miles, and they did, went through the whole process and gave us, you know, some video of how the traffic's. If, if it works like they say it's going to work, it'll be great, but I'm skeptical. So we'll see. But it was a good presentation, and did get some, we did, I did get some questions about our new charter school, which will not be opening this August as planned, but because of the commercials that they had been running, a lot of the cities, the representatives from the cities had questions about whether that was going to happen. And at the time, we hadn't learned that it was not going to happen, but we have since learned that it's going to be a little delay, which is not surprising. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Member Almond.
The Business Advisory Board met at Lake Murray High School, and we toured the manufacturing program. The board members were very interested in that program and expressed an interest in, in the future, going to other sites for our meetings. There were some handouts that I need to share with board members that I'll do electronically, and then I will bring up some questions at our next school board meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I represented the board on the Wellness Committee and wanted to remind everyone that there is a free health fair on Friday for our employees right here in the Educational Support Center in this facility as we sit. Also attended SHAC, which is our Seminole Health Advisory Committee, and we had a great presentation from a cardiologist from Nemours, where he shared data with us of training all high school students on CPR, how it can truly save lives, because the majority of heart attacks that do occur are actually at home rather than in a public area where there might be a doctor, an EKG machine, or things like that. So I've taken it upon myself, we're getting a committee together, working with Nemours. We know Center Florida Regional Hospital was so generous last year to donate the CPR dummies, one per each high school. And we just wanted to coordinate it district-wide to make sure each student has access to get that certification to potentially save a family member's life. Many of us attended the Center Florida Public School Boards Coalition on Monday, where we received a legislative update from many of our legislative aides. And we also shared best practices for our high school graduation rates and reading readiness. So most of us got all those handouts. And then today, Dr. Griffin and I attended our mayors and managers' meeting, and I, too, will share electronically. The county shared the infrastructure sales tax program of all their funded programs with transportation from the first, second, and third generation. So I'll scan that and get that off to you. And there was also a lot of discussion about the school resource officers and funding of which. So Don Essinger made a very good presentation, I felt, Dr. Griffin, and allowed for dialogue between the city managers and the mayors, and we're hopeful that some decisions will be made in the near future for us to have one SRO in every single school when we start next year. And those were my committees. Moving on to the public comments section of the meeting, Mrs. Almond, if you could share with us, please.
Thank you. The public input segment of the meeting is provided to allow the, the public to present specific matters to the school board for its consideration and referral to the superintendent and staff for inquiry and action or address specific items on the agenda. The public input segment of the meeting is not open to presentation of campaign issues by political candidates or others, student disciplinary actions, pending employee disciplinary matters or pending litigation, policy 9.63, civility and conduct of parents, other visitors to school and school district facilities, and district employees. It is not the intent of the school board to deprive any person of his or her right of freedom of expression. It is, however, the intent of the school board to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct on the part of the members of the public appearing before the school board. The school board expects positive communication and will not permit disruptive, volatile, hostile, or aggressive communication on the part of the speakers. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must clearly identify the matter to be addressed in the speaker's sign-up form. Speakers shall direct their comments only to the school board and may not address the audience. Speakers that do not comply with this direction will be asked to leave the lectern. The school board is pleased that you are taking the time to come to this meeting and you are willing to make your views known or speak to issues before the school board for action. When you go to the lectern, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
And there is a light warning system up there to help guide you with your three minutes, and I will call three names so you can prepare yourselves if you're on deck. There's also one acknowledgement request I just received from Abby Sanchez, Sable Point Elementary in Lake Brantley PTA, and Sable Point teacher. Thank you for being here. Is Megan here? Excuse me? Okay. She did write comments that will become public record for the school board, so I will have the clerk enter that into our public permanent record. Thank you. Ashley Brady, then Rachel Martinez, then Jacqueline Riley.
Good evening.
Hi, my name's Ashley Brady, and I work for Transportation as a school bus monitor. And I'm actually here about the payment of our raise. Now, not many people know where I work. I work two jobs. And most of the time, I go five to six weeks off day off. Five to six weeks. I work myself to the bone. My kids know it. And my kids asked me a few months ago, how do you do it? I love my job. That is how I do it. I want to be a teacher. I'm going to school to be a teacher. I'm not going to leave the education system, but I think I'm worth more than 2.25%. I am only 21 years old. I work two jobs, then I go to school. I had to move back in with my parents because I chose to come to the education system because this is where I want to be. And that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Rachel Martinez, then Jacqueline Riley, then Dan Smith, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Martinez. I am a first-year teacher, and I just, I love my job. Okay? I did a job that I hated for about eight and a half years. I spent well over $30,000 in student loans and ended up being a teacher, not because of the pay, but because of what you got from it. But the closer you get into it, and the more you take your time and you invest so much of you, you realize at some point, it doesn't cut it. When they say love can't pay the bills, that's exactly what they mean. I'm here also about teacher salary. I heard someone say that being a teacher was a noble, a noble occupation, which I totally agree with. I mean, I couldn't agree more. But how much is nobility worth? Is it worth having the best in the district? Is it worth staying in A-rated school? Is it, is it really worth staying where you are as opposed to moving upstate? Or moving in a different area that could actually give you more, not just in salary, but in benefits as well? I don't think what is being asked is beyond the means, but I do feel like being a teacher should be an occupation to be desired. People should be like, yeah, this is something that's going to change the world, and it literally does. And I'm sure you guys know that. I know you have worked in different areas, and you've seen that firsthand. But I just wanted to point out that it does take raw character to do what's right, even when no one else is doing it. So even if Seminole County is the first county to stand up and say, look, they're the ones that make this happen, not just the teachers, but the bus drivers and everybody, even the custodians. My custodians are awesome. And if they weren't there, I would spend a lot more time than I want to at school because we have to be at a certain level. We have to do so much for our students, but that doesn't mean that our salary's going to cover it. So I'm just saying, when, whatever it takes, do what's right.
Jacqueline Riley, then Dan Smith, then Thomas Bugos II.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Riley. I teach at a Vito High School. I owe this school district 19 years of my life and my career as a high school teacher. I worked hard each and every year, but I, I didn't quit. I didn't, even after Marzano was rolled out, I didn't quit. I mean, I thought about it, but I never quit. So anyway, I'm still here. My two children are, are grown now, but they are products of this school district. My sons never attended any private school. They always attended public schools. They turned out well. My oldest is a medical doctor now. He had UCF undergrad, micro molecular biology, and he went to UCF Medical School, and he's now a doctor at University of Pennsylvania in Philadelphia. My other son also has a UCF Industrial Engineering degree. He has an undergrad, and he has a master's degree in industrial engineering. But you know what? This year, he chose to teach at a high school in a neighboring county. He says he has never worked so hard in his life. That's the life of a teacher. This is after he had five years of engineering classes and three internships. And the reason I share this is that I want you to know that I do not believe it was just the SEPS teachers that who helped my sons get ready to fly, but it was the lunch personnel, the bus drivers, the secretaries, the parapros, the custodians, plus the teachers that put wings on my children. They are flourishing because of the people you employ and retain. Everyone worked together for my son's success. So thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations to your sons. Dan Smith, then Thomas Bugos, then Kathy Breitenbrock.
Good evening. My name is Dan Smith. I am a employee of Seminole County Public Schools. I'm a teacher at Lake Brantley High School. And I just want to talk about, you know, I guess the divide that we've had over the last year or so. And I really just am hoping in recommending and asking if we can just come together. It's getting close to the end of the school year, but I think, you know, I think we, I really do think that we can do it. I mean, it just, we're naturally divided, and we always have been. I was thinking about this, I really was. You know, almost we're ingrained to be divided. You know, girls here, boys there. You know, you sit over here, teachers are over here, administrators are over here. We're used to it, and we're almost uncomfortable if we have to, you know, mix it up or something. But I think we should give it a try. We should give it a try anyway. I think that anything that we are apart on, I think that if we're willing to discuss, willing to compromise, willing to work together, I think we can do it. I just feel like we've been in conflict for so long, and, you know, I'm, myself, I'm tired of it. I don't really have anything in me to, to just continue. And I think that if we listen, if we can speak respectfully to each other, I think that we can probably come into an agreement somehow, some way. And I think we have something coming up in a couple of weeks. And before you know it, we're starting all over again in about four weeks or five weeks. So maybe that's the time to do it. I was just thinking that this country, this experiment of our country, darkest days have been when we're divided. Not any threat from other countries, north, south, or border, but whatever it is, we've had divide, you know, conservative, liberal, Republican, Democrat, whatever it is, north, south, you know, Yankees, Mets. It just, it happens. That's, that's what it is. When we have a divide, things are not going well, and it harms us. When we're together, things have worked out really well. So I guess what I'm asking is, in a very long-winded way, is I don't think anything is going to be impossible. And maybe next time when we start again, hopefully in the spring, let's just try to get rid of the divide and come together. I'm willing to try, and I think you guys are, too. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thomas Bugos, then Kathy Breitenbrock, then Lisa DeLeo Mercer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Griffin. My name's Thomas Joe Bugos II, and I am a member of Seminole County Society. I'm a citizen here. I'm a voting citizen. I voted every possible election I can. I also am a proud parent of two children going through Seminole County Public Schools. I'm here to speak to you tonight about local government. The late Tip O'Neill once stated that all local, all government is local. And by that, I think he meant that if we want to see change in our country, it needs to start at the most basic of local governments. That would be this body sitting in front of us. If we want it to happen in our county, state, or nation, we need to start right here. We have to make that change. We have to be the ones to smoke, throw that small pebble into the pond and make the ripple spread across the nation. If we want to see change happen, it must begin locally. We have to start paying a living wage to our employees. Across the nation, we see people struggling over and over again. And if we do not start somewhere, it will continue, and we cannot have that happen in our country. We must start here by paying living wages. Wages that will sustain the people that live in the community. Today, I was in a meeting. Over half the people sitting in that meeting were not in this county. Why? They either couldn't afford to live in this county or chose not to because they couldn't see a reason to live in this county. That's not a good, not a good precedent we're setting in this county. We must start improving what we are doing at the local level. We can't expect the state or nation to change our local community. We must do that. And we begin with a living wage. I'm sitting here looking around, and I know that many of our teachers, bus drivers, secretary, are suffering financially. We have gone through a recession in this nation. We can't expect our national government to change this recession. We must start it here, locally, with living wages. We can do that. This local board can start by providing for its employees. If we want, as Mr. Kelly has said, and one of the reasons that we're suffering is school, student enrollment is down, well, nobody can afford to live here. We saw, seen the 60 Minutes program where we have the highest account of homeless students. We've been gradually changing it. Where did that change? Not from the national, not from the state, from the local community. It is up to us, the elected officials, those that we have put in charge, to make the changes for us. We expect you to do this. We have already stood up. We have voted. Those living in this county has said, we're willing to pay more. We're willing to raise our taxes. We're willing to raise the ish, our amount. Now it's time for the board to return that. So please, when you're sitting here as an elected official, remember, all government is local, and the only change comes from the smallest and closest government to its people. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Kathy, and then Lisa DeLeo Mercer, and then Sandra Maldonado-Ross, please.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Griffin and school board members, and many of you know me. I'm Kathy Breitenbrock. I'm a teacher at Charles Middle School, a Winter Springs resident, and my three daughters all graduated from Seminole County schools and have moved on to be successful. I'm here to echo what some of the other people have said. I am getting ready to retire after 15 years. So why would I address you tonight? I'll be gone in 45 days. I'm here as an advocate for my colleagues and for the students of Seminole County. I think what has been happening is, I'm a 15-year veteran. I make $3,000 more than a brand-new teacher. And there is so many of us in that boat. And the message that gives me and my colleagues is that our education and experience is invaluable, and that you're more interested in recruiting new teachers than keeping successful teachers. The impression I think you are portraying is that you have created a well-oiled machine, that we have great curriculum. that we have great curriculum, great technology, and great consultants, but the teachers are a dime a dozen. That's the impression we're getting. We can be easily replaced. This is not good for our children. We need experienced teachers. We need experienced teachers to bridge new teachers as they go from college to the classroom. You need our experience. But you're paying very little more to those of us that have been here forever, and I'm only here fifteen years. We are the gems of the county. We are the ones that come in early and stay late to provide extra care for students that need help, or to help an AP student get a four or five. We're at the math festival. We're at the history day festival. We're the ones that are putting in all the time. And we want to be recognized, and we think we should have something for that. We make the three As, the academics, the athletics, and the arts, what they are. That's us. The recession is ending, and we think we're at a point where we can receive more. We hope you'll listen to us. I'm sad not more people are here, but I think they think that we're not being heard, so why bother coming? I don't feel that way. Please don't ignore us. Please consider what we're saying, and thank you for fifteen wonderful years in the county.
Thank you for your service. We appreciate it. Lisa, then Sandra Maldonado-Ross, then Judy Ning.
Good evening. I'm Lisa DeLeo Mercer, and I live at 223 North Mounts Bay Court in Longwood. And I just want to address what she just said. Many people are not here because they're working a second job, and I took off for my second job. Many other people feel as passionate as everybody else who's here, but they couldn't be here because they couldn't afford to be here. I actually sacrificed because I wanted to be here so much that I wanted to talk to you, so I actually took off for my second job. Now, that's going to make me suffer in the long run in supporting my family, but I felt that this was worth it, to have the chance to speak to you. I have two children that went through Seminole County Public Schools, Wakava, Teague, and Lake Brantley. My one daughter graduated three years ago, and my other daughter's graduating in two months from Lake Brantley. And I'm here to talk about the salaries for all of the Seminole County Public School employees. My children were successful, just like Jackie said, because of every single person who works in Seminole County Public Schools who touched their lives. And that goes from cafeteria workers to the custodians, to the bus drivers that took them to and from school safely, and the teachers, and the paras, and the secretaries. Like many Seminole County Public School employees, I feel unappreciated, and quite frankly, I feel disrespected. I have been teaching for eighteen years, and I make $45,000. That is only $6,000 more than a first-year teacher. I work a second job during the school year to support myself and my family, and in the summer, I work two jobs. The time, the evenings, the weekends, the summer, that should be spent on family, and rest, and rejuvenation, so that I can do my job well, instead is spent working extra jobs. I beg of you to please make employee pay a priority. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sandra, then Judy, then Robert Eggen.
Nina. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Sandra Maldonado-Ross, 6919 Compass Court, Orlando, 32810. I have a couple of things to speak to you guys about tonight. First, I want to begin with an interesting fact that I found out recently. This part I knew, but the second part you'll find interesting. The beginning teacher salary here in Seminole County is right at $39,000, which has bumped up that high to recruit and retrain new highly-qualified teachers, as they tell us. However, Osceola County beginning teacher pay is $41,000, and according to the DOE data, they have the highest turnover rate in central Florida. So the logic that if we pay more the beginning teachers, we can recruit and retain them is incorrect. While I would like to believe that our School Board members did their research before instructing their school staff members to raise the beginning teacher's salary, now I wonder. I'm wondering if the reason they insisted on the beginning teacher pay to be raised was simply to pad their own pockets, since as School Board members, their pay is based on our beginning teacher salaries. I hope and pray I am wrong in my thought process, but I can't be sure. So let's work on retaining our already-highly-qualified, experienced teachers instead. Next, I know that at least one or more of our School Board members has had a parent or relative as a teacher, and that fact said, I am curious, would your mom or dad or relative be happy with what you, as our School Board members, are offering as a salary increase for your A-plus teachers? Also, if you were the child of a current teacher, how would you feel having to get a free or reduced lunch rate because your mom or dad were considered economically disadvantaged due to their low teacher salary? Finally, after Mr. Kelly's wonderful and informative presentation, I have to say one last thing. Instead of insulting all of us by assuming we don't know how budgets work, that we may, instead, think about that we may just know more than what you are doing to maximize our budget. Lastly, don't use the excuse that you can find you can't fund teacher salaries with the millage because you can't guarantee you will be able to sustain it when the millage expires. Instead, why don't you use the logic that if you use the millage to keep our highly-rated teachers, to maintain our overall district's A-rating, the voters will respect your decision with the use of the millage and be happy to vote for a millage amendment in the future to sustain those salaries.
Judy, then Robert, then Rosie Gerito.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Griffin, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Judy Ning. I'm a teacher at Lake Howell High School, and I live at 1992 Canal Road in Deltona, Florida. Last Friday, I was out on one of my favorite Florida trails and came upon a couple and their dog. I said hello, and they said hello, but then the woman recognized me as a teacher. I realized she was a Volusia County teacher. I told her I had changed locations. I am now in Seminole County. And she said, "Good for you." And I replied, "Yes, it is very good for me." And I wished her luck, especially with the mess that Volusia has put themselves in. You see, I worked for Volusia County Schools for sixteen years. I was there for the beginning of what I like to call "The Death Spiral." It began in 2004 with a new superintendent. Interestingly, soon after she came on, we suffered three hurricanes. Last year, they ousted her, but it was too late. The new board that was elected was hastily chosen due to the public's growing discontent. They decided the problems, the public, that is, decided the problems in the schools were the fault of the teachers and those on the inside. So the elected members, contrary to public education, if you can believe it or not, some of them even send their kids to private schools. If you need confirmation, you can read the Daytona Beach Journal any day, and you'll know more about it. Today, parents, teachers, and the general public are outraged and very worried about their schools up there. So I'm asking that Seminole learn a lesson from Volusia before it's too late. Honor those who work here with the honesty, dignity, and respect. It is demoralizing to be told there is no money for raises when there really is. And now to tell all the schools, "They must eliminate teacher positions because you have no money." How will this district survive on mistrust and that "us against you" mentality that is being created? We had someone talk about the division. You know, we need to not go down that road. We're on a precipice. We too could begin spiraling downward, or you could make Seminole the A-plus district we are so proud of and of where we love to work. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Judy. Robert, then Rosie, then Maureen Shackelford, please.
Good evening, Dr. Griffin, Madam Chair, School Board. This is my first time up here, so sorry if I'm a little nervous. I'm a English teacher at Lake Howell High School. I have been happily employed for the past six years, and hopefully another six, God willing. I love my job, and I, like I said, wouldn't want to be anywhere else. And I could talk about employees wanting or being upset about their pay, but it almost feels like they haven't been heard at this point. So instead, I just wanted to talk about employee appreciation and dreams. Employee appreciation, we would like to hear a good word, even a singular word. "Good job." "Thank you." "That you are part of our A-school solution, our A-school district solution." And then I look over here when I come in today, and it was here at other meetings, our "Dream Builders" quote by Walt Disney. And it states that "Whatever we accomplish belongs to our entire group, a tribute to our combined effort." What combined effort has the board put forward? To help our combined effort. We're in it together, not supposed to be taking sides. And so I think none of us got into education to dream about debating a 2.25% raise. Not anyone on this board, I'm sure. We got into education and this field because we dreamed for a better society, a better life, a future for our young people, not to debate 2.25% of a raise. That's not a combined effort. It's divisive, and we're not going to take it anymore. What I would ask, with our remaining time, or my remaining time, is if the board could honor Walt Disney's words, we're, "Please take it down," because it would be insulting. We need, a combined effort would be... A combined effort would be a proper, and fair, and honest negotiation with all of their employees. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your input. Rosie, then Maureen Shackelford, then Karina Durr, please.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Griffin, School Board members. I, my name is Rosie, I worked in human resources for the last nineteen years, speaking from Nan Park, one of our teachers. As a sixteen-year Seminole County Public School teacher, I am still 5,000 below the average salary. How is this possible? Fifteen years ago, I worked forty hours per week and had superb lessons. Eight years ago, I worked fifty hours per week and still had superb lessons. This year, I work sixty-five hours per week and have fair lessons. This is due to Seminole County Public Schools increasing my workload. Traditionally, more work equals more pay. If you can increase our pay, then reduce our workload. We are dying of stress, overworked, and underpaid. How are you, the School Board, helping Seminole County Public Schools stay an A-plus county? Thank you.
Thank you, Rosie. Maureen, then Karina Durr, then Sharon Swalina, please.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Griffin, School Board members. My name is Maureen Shackelford. I work at Sterling Park Elementary. I'm a secretary there. I'm a proud parent of four Seminole County students. One has graduated, three are at Lake Howell High School right now. I have been a faithful dividend for fifteen years and an employee for over seven. Recent events have led me to start my life over and get a fresh start. Unfortunately, just last week, I was denied apartment housing based on my income, even with alimony. The income I earn to feed and house my children through Seminole County Public Schools. At fifty years old, I have to have my thirty-year-old son co-sign on an apartment. As a grown, independent adult, it breaks my heart to ask my child to do this for his mother. Thank you all for your time. I ask you to please consider a fair and respectful raise for all SCPS employees. Thank you.
Karina Durr. Karina Durr, then Sharon Swalina, then Greg Owens, please.
Actually, I don't think the person ahead of me is here. I'm Sharon Swalina. I live at 2601 River Landing Drive, Sanford. Unfortunately, this is not my first time addressing you. I honestly hope, and I don't mean disrespect, but please listen to us, because traditionally, you haven't. You really haven't. You guys claim to make tough decisions. I haven't seen any tough decisions, especially in relation to our salaries. I've only witnessed the easy decision of status quo. Our salaries have been stagnant and have not maintained an equal pace with the cost of living. Too many teachers are forced into working second jobs to cover the basics of food, shelter, clothing, and healthcare. When I started twenty-eight years ago, teachers were retiring at salaries of $65,000 a year. But under the leadership of this School Board, salaries have steadily declined. It's a shame that at this rate, when I finally reach retirement, thirty years of loyal service, I can look forward to a maximum salary of only $57,000 a year. I guess I won't be quitting my second job anytime soon. It's time for the School Board to finally start to make tough decisions. The members need to decide to make teachers a budget priority. The members need to decide to give teachers a livable salary. It's time for the School Board to decide to pay teachers a salary that is commensurate with our level of responsibility. The School Board needs to decide that A-plus teachers working in an A-plus district deserve A-plus money. On second thought, these aren't the tough decisions. These are just the right decisions. Thank you.
Is Karina Durr out here any longer?
Right here.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
You reversed order.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to hold longer to get up here.
It's worth it, though. Love seeing the smiling face.
That's a great picture, right?
Can I have a smile from everybody? I always see straight faces. That's better. I'm Karina Durr, and this is Brian Durr. My husband, we came up together. You guys have seen our family before. We just wanted to speak a few minutes about how the insurance thing is still really difficult for us, and thankfully, my husband made it because he does work three jobs, and all of our coworkers work multiple jobs as well. So they wanted to come speak with us, but they couldn't be here because they are at their second job. But he knows more about all that to do with the insurance.
Hey, we just want to start off, we're very, very appreciative of you guys, and we know you have a lot on your plate, a lot of decisions. But I speak for everybody here, and we just say, working two and three jobs takes a lot away from your family. And we just, I was thinking about it, I was asking the kids today, I said, "What do you think we should get paid?" Because I knew I was coming here. I said, "What do you think is fair?" And, you know, I've heard that at the last meeting and things like that. You know, you get answers from a kindergartner. It's completely different. I said, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" And they have all kinds of answers, and I love it. And, you know, they ask, one of the fifth...
He was going to answer your question.
And between putting kids in daycare and things like that, and just increases in your daily life, whether it's groceries, or... I just asked that we would get paid that's fair. And I was thinking, what the increase should be? Should it be at least, you know, to keep up with inflation? I don't think that's unfair to ask. But when it comes down to it, it's not just that, it's the increases, the increases in insurance, kind of counterbalance that out. It also requires a little bit more pay as well. We're not asking for a crazy amount of money, but just to think, if you were in our position, it's to, you know, you always ask the kids, "What would you want somebody to do if they were in your situation?" Well, same thing for you guys. What would you expect if you were in our situation? And I know a lot of you have had kids, you've gone through the difficulties of, you know, having to take off for sick days, when it's not you being sick, or, you know, just the increases that come along with life, with things that are increasing, things that break. You know, it's just a challenge to keep up. And then, when you're, when you come from a family, both my parents were teachers, you get to kind of see what it's like, right, kid? And my parents, they just instilled in us saving and saving. And then when you save, get two steps forward and one step back. And you've got a plan with your finances. You just want your increase to go up a little bit, a little bit more than it is. So if you guys can just put yourselves in our shoes as teachers, just think about that, and we would really, really appreciate it. And like I said, we do appreciate you guys for what you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Durr family. Mr. Greg Owens, then Brian Spoon, then Mary Nasser, please. Mr. Greg Owens, then Brian Spoon, then Mary Nasser, please.
Good evening.
Greg Owens, I guess you need my address, 116 North Presview Avenue, Longwood. I prepared something this time, thought I'd just read it to you. Not too long ago, on a particularly cold and damp morning, I experienced something I'd like to share with you. The school bus protested loudly as I started it to do the morning pre-trip. The windshield had frost on it, and the wipers groaned as they tried to break through the ice. As I finished the pre-trip, the ice on the bottom of the windshield started to break away and finally cleared enough to start my route. As I got closer to the first stop, the bus began to run better, and the windshield was getting clearer. But the bus was still cold inside, simply because this bus has no passenger heater installed. I picked up the first students, they were shivering. Then to the second stop, the bus was quiet as it usually is on these early mornings, the students are sleeping. Between the second and third stops, I was startled to hear, coming from the back, a voice singing. As I listened closer, this is what I heard. "The heater on this bus really sucks, really sucks, really sucks. The heater on this bus really sucks, and I'm frickin' cold." Obviously, a made-up song to protest to the tune of Wheels on the Bus. The other students soon picked up on it, and after a bit, the bus warmed up with some of their exuberance. I got the message. Later that day, I had journeys picking up students, and while I'm waiting on the ramp, I'm rereading some of the positive quotes from famous persons that are murals on the walls of the school. These are really nice and done well. They're words from Maya Angelou, Martin Luther King Jr., Clint Eastwood, Mark Twain, and many others, too many to list, that are designed to make a point, teach, and encourage positive behavior. Really nicely done. Words. Powerful words. Memorable words. Simple words. So I started thinking, words put to a song are the most powerful and usually pretty easy to remember. Remember the heater incident mentioned earlier? Well, this is what I came up with. "The drivers of the bus are good people, work real hard, keep kids safe. The drivers of the bus work real hard and go the extra mile. The teachers of the schools are good people, teach our kids, help them learn. The teachers of the schools work real hard and go the extra mile." This one was a little tough. "The educational support team are good people, maintain the schools, fix the buses. The educational support team works real hard and goes the extra mile." I struggled with this one.
Oh, how many more stances? We're out of time.
One more.
Okay.
"The members of the school board are good people, provide leadership, and know what to do. If the members of the school board really cared, you'd recognize or value..." Get the message?
Thank you very much. Brian Spoon, then Mary Nasser, then Jonathan Redwitz. Good evening, Mr. Spoon.
Good evening. I'm Brian Spoon, Winter Park, Winter Park, Florida, Eastbrook Elementary teacher. I'm going to read you a letter from a colleague of mine. So remember, this is not me speaking, because I'm not 28-years-old, okay? Want to get to that part? "I have written this letter to inform you that this will be my last year in education. I am 28-years-old, and I have taught in mathematics in Seminole County for the past four years. I am moving on to a different career path in computer science. I am very smart and capable of earning this degree in the field, as landing a job when I finish earning my degree. Nothing is holding me back from doing this, especially when I know I have reached the peak of my career in education. The most I see myself making in this field is the amount of money I will be earning as a starting salary in the field of computer science. I have no regrets, no second thoughts. Nothing could convince me to stay here when I could be making double what I make in a career that is far less stressful. Hard times are coming for public education, hiring teachers for STEM subjects, the subjects we absolutely need to have knowledgeable teachers in. It will become extremely difficult task for administrators. After all, you're competing with other companies who offer jobs where STEM majors can be making double the salaries that any teaching job has to offer. Continue to undervalue the teachers you have and you will continue to sustain the well-known damaging belief that teachers don't get paid enough. The shortage for capable, knowledgeable teachers will only continue to grow. I hope that you take this letter to heart. Sincerely, a soon-to-be former SCPS teacher." That speaks volumes. They decided to get out early. The low salary that we offer are brand-new people. And now that they don't have any job security, we're, we're also saying that, hey, we're creating a team of free agents. Free agents because they're free to go anywhere. They don't have the job security. Hey, they're paying more over there? We're there. Hmm. And I know that that's some of the politics up in Tallahassee, but we all need to speak up for that. We're all in this together. It's a combined effort. That means me, us, and you. We need to tell Tallahassee that, you know, enough's enough. You can't make us, you know, you can't just force people to not have job security. It doesn't matter what we raise that minimum salary to, or not. They, you're creating a team of free agents. I'm a baseball guy, so I know all about free agents. So, like LeBron, they'll take their talents to wherever they get the highest bid. And then the next year, they can do the same thing again. Marzano's ideas were good, but it's not the only way to teach. And just because it's not Marzano doesn't make it not good teaching. So, the evaluation process is, is getting in there somewhere, too. We're creating this where people are so stressed, they're leaving. And the exodus is just beginning. And when veteran teachers leave, and you're left with only free agents, that's going to be the real scary day.
Thank you, Mr. Spoon. We appreciate your input. Mary, then Jonathan. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mary Nasser, I'm in transportation for 14 years. When I first started, I was excited about working for you guys. The pay was wonderful, the benefits were great. And over the years, you guys let me down, big time. Because I can't make it, I work three jobs, okay? I mean, the deductibles and everything, it's killing me. You say you have to come to work, you need to keep your health good, but yet, what you have to lay out for doctors, I can't do it. And I mean, I want to be healthy, I want to be there for you guys to work, and be for the kids, but I, it's getting to the point, I can't. I can't keep working three jobs to keep the roof over my head. I mean, I'm 54-years-old, and because the amount of money I make, I had to go to my 82-year-old father to get him to co-sign a loan for a car for me. That's ridiculous. I should be there for them, not them at 80-something-years-old there for me, because my employer can't give me a decent salary. I give my kids, if they come on the bus and they don't have money, I'll do without. I won't have a soda. They come on the bus, "Miss Mary, I don't have 35 cents to buy my lunch. You got any change? Yeah, okay, I'll drink water today." Okay? I do without for the kids. I had one kid come on the bus, "I can't wait, when I grow up, I want to be a bus driver." You know what my answer was? You want to starve? Don't be a bus driver. Do anything else but be a bus driver. I hear so many bus drivers losing their homes, teachers losing their homes because they're not getting a decent salary. I don't know what to tell you anymore. It's like you got closed ears, you got deaf ears to everybody, and you're not listening to us. I make, my sister is younger than me, and she's making five times the amount of money I am. I've given you 14 years of my life to be slapped in the face. I've already started looking for another job. I don't want to leave. I love the kids, I love being with the kids, but you've left me no choice. And that's 14 years of my life to these kids. I have kids that I see at Walmart shopping with their wives and their babies. They come up to me, "Miss Mary, you talked to me, you set me on the right path, I'm going back to college. When I graduate, I went to college, and I've got a great career, I got a baby, I got a house now, thank you so much." I can't, I can't do it no more. You're putting handcuffs on everybody here, that they have no other choice but to leave. We've had drivers in the last two weeks, two weeks, leave, because they can't make it anymore. They just can't, they financially cannot make it. They have, they're working two and three jobs to make ends meet. And you just, you're not listening to us. And I don't know what, what to do to get you to listen to everybody here. It's like, you don't want to listen to what we have to say.
Mary, thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to be here. Good evening.
Good evening. Oliver Wendell Holmes said, "Put not your trust in money, but put your money into trust." Hello, my name is Jonathan Radowitz. I'm a school bus monitor for Seminole County Public Schools. I live at 1041 Wingo Drive, Casper, Florida, 32707. I'm a school bus monitor, and I take my job very seriously. And it's because parents trust me to keep their children safe on the trip to and from school. The schools trust me to keep their students under control and safe while on the bus ramp and when in transit. Students trust me to tell me when they are happy, sad, or mad. I do everything in my power to continue to build this trust and respect. I do countless, as do countless other people. Cafeteria staff are trusted to provide healthy, hot meals to students, breakfast and lunch. Teachers are trusted to provide quality education to our flourishing youth, and countless other cogs in a machine that must run because the citizens of Seminole County trust that it will. According to Career Trends, the annual cost of living for Seminole County is $29,951 a year, for a single adult with no children. I doubt I will make $15,000 this year. With this money, I must support my mom, who was a bus driver for 20 years and was forced to retire when her health took a serious downfall. I will support my girlfriend and my four dogs, because they eat before I do. I will continue to get up and be at work at 11:30, and I will continue to be an employee that the school board and transportation can trust to come through in a time of need. In conclusion, the district trusts us that the school board will continue to provide an excellent education to the future of America through the employment of individuals, and we will continue to do so because this job, whether it is a principal, a teacher, a nurse, or a custodian, a bus driver, a monitor, a dispatcher, or maintenance, is not a job, it's a passion. So I humbly ask the board to put not your trust into money, but to put your money into trust. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your input. Thank you all for your input and your time this evening. Moving on to unfinished businesses, is there any unfinished or new business, Dr. Griffin?
Yes, there's one new business item. That's the School Board of Seminole County Adopt Resolution 2016-02, authorizing the advanced refunding of a portion of the Certificates of Participation Series 2009-A.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Can we wait a moment in case there might be board member questions? Board members, any questions or comments on that? I must again share with you pursuant to Florida Statute, Section 112.3143, and to avoid even the appearance of a conflict, I will be abstaining from this vote. Seeing no further questions or discussion, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, and I will abstain. Motion carries. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to Superintendent's Report.
There are two read-only items. The first is a report of our Black History Month activities, and the second is the monthly grants report.
Thank you. Moving on to board member comments, Member Schaffner.
There's so much going on, so much been going on since we met the last time. I had the opportunity to go over to Westside.
Is your mic on?
Sorry, I had the opportunity to go over to Westside. The 21st Century Program over there in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club, they had one of the Orlando Science Center nights, that, where they do all kinds of science experiments set up. It was a wonderful night, and the kids had such a great time. I don't know who's having more fun, the adults or the children, but it was a great opportunity. But the best part of it was, we had four of our, our schools there, two high, two middle schools and two elementary schools, whose children attend Westside and the Boys and Girls Club, and the principals themselves were there. And they were there to talk to the parents, to see if they had any questions, to answer questions, but they were also there to get the parents to do the survey, the parent surveys were out at the time. It was such a positive, positive reaction to, because the parents would say, "Oh, my gosh, the principal, you're here." And they were all a part of it, so it was a great, great event. I think all of us were attending the State of the County event, the luncheon that was held. Certainly, they had lots of positive things to say about the Seminole County Public Schools, and what we contribute to the economy in Seminole County, and that was a big positive. We had the academic tournament that was held here in this, in this room. And now, the, after the academic tournament was over, Seminole High School was the winner, but they choose specific students from each of the schools, the top students, and they are going on to represent Seminole County in the state tournament. Those kids are so smart, it's almost scary. We had the spelling bee here in this room, that was a countywide spelling bee. We had, I attended the elementary music concert that was held over at Winter Springs Elementary, or Winter Springs High School, and that is bringing in elementary music students from all of the elementary schools. We had a lot of students that were there that day, several hundred as a matter of fact. They work with a clinician, it's a, it's a great opportunity for the students. I had the opportunity to work with our student government leaders in nine of our high schools on a Saturday, it was two weeks ago, and they spent the day collecting food for the food pantries that we have in all of our schools. It was a great event, the students did a wonderful job, but all this food was brought to the cafeteria at Lyman High School. This is Saturday morning, of course, Monday morning, we have to use Lyman High School cafeteria. The kids sorted all the food, they packed it up to send out to the individual schools where it was going, they did an awesome job. So, kudos to our student government leaders. They did a great job. Several of us went to Goldsboro for Dr. Seuss's birthday, and read to the students. Dr. Seuss is, he's famous for everybody, but Goldsboro in particular always celebrates his birthday, and many of us were over there for that. And the last thing, I'll leave some things for the others to report on. Teague had a talent show that Dr. Wyndham and I attended, and, boy, I was surprised. Teague Middle School, they had some awesome talent there. Students as well as, as teachers, and there was a custodian plays the piano like you can't believe. So, that was another great event, huge turnout for it, it was a great event. So I'll leave the rest of it, so the rest of you can have something to talk about.
Right, Mr. Bauer.
No comments, thank you.
Mrs. Almond.
Minnie Cardena to you and your team for our most successful World Language Festival at Winter Springs High School. Those of us that were there enjoyed it very much. For Avita High School, I know that most of us participated in judging the capstone projects, and they're so well-done, it's incredible, the work that these kids and their mentors and their teachers put into this process, so thank you to them. Do you have the proclamation on your list, Dr. Calderon, from Ms. Carey?
What I read during the...
From Seminole County?
Of that one? No.
Okay. Thank you to the Seminole County Board of County Commissioners for recognizing International Women's Day in Seminole County with a proclamation, and they invited all of us to attend their recent meeting. I'm shocked you didn't speak about the...
I'll leave it to you.
I'm going to leave this for Tina. I think you're going to probably mention that.
No, that's fine.
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, I have them all, so I'm just sitting here crossing off as...
Okay. School-related, Non-instructional Employee of the Year, that was a wonderful celebration, and we really enjoyed that night honoring all those wonderful employees that we have there. And then this morning, English States Elementary had a group of teachers and students, they're a leader in me school, and they did an Olympic event, and they had Olympian Rowdy Gaines, their former Olympic gold winner swimmer, and the kids were really excited about all of that. That's my report.
They did a great job.
They did a great job. So what I have left is, I had the opportunity to visit with some of our extended daycares. And board members, if you haven't had a chance to visit lately, I highly recommend it. They're very, very organized, down to the minute of what is instructional, what is free time, what is computer time, what is homework time, divided up into grade level. They have themes every week, so I was very, very proud of what our extended-day staff and team do in our schools each and every day. And I'd also like to thank the Sanford Chamber for conducting a book drive. They want to support our Great Start program and our early head start, and our pre-K in our schools. So they are currently, this month, collecting books to donate to our Sanford area schools. Many of you do know, I did have the opportunity with Mr. Rinaldi to present to the Sanford City Commission an update on our Sanford schools, and very complimentary back to the entire school district. Our ePathways team with Dr. Weisong and myself had the opportunity to tour right down the road, Consolidated Labels, and it's very exciting to see the great businesses that are in our backyard that want to partner with many of our programs of emphasis and to make sure that our teachers can go out and see what's happening post-secondary, and then also for our students to have internship opportunities. Many of you were also attending our faith-based meeting, where we're reviewing our keys for the character, and I think probably the best idea that came out of that, that Andy Searle shared, was to create an app for all of our students and our teachers to have, and I think that will be really good going forward in the future. Literacy Night was held at Wilson Elementary, first time ever, and whenever I visit that school, I'm just astounded with the teacher participation late at night, and the parents and the students. It was wonderful. And thank you, Dr. Griffin, for addressing PBAS this month, where he gave a testing update to our business leaders, and it was heartwarming that they were supportive of the sun sign solution, and perhaps if we partner together next year in Tallahassee, they too will partner with us on doing what's right for instruction and what's right for assessment in the state of Florida. Congratulations to Pam Schellman. She was given Pam Schellman Day from the city of Longwood, based on her retirement and service to Seminole County Public Schools. And we also attended and had Dr. Griffin speak at the annual meeting of our Center of Florida Zoo Board. I think, moving forward, we're going to see greater collaboration and more instruction and education coming through the zoo with our school district. Midway had their Spring Festival this weekend, which was widely attended, not only just from the students at Midway and their families, but there were many other schools. I guess they had advertised it through Facebook, so it was neat to see schools and families from other district schools to attend. And shout-out to Seminole High School for hosting the regional dance competition. Phenomenal, phenomenal dancers from all over the southeast in the country, and you could have eaten off of the gym floor. It was so clean. All the dazzlers take it upon themselves to make sure that they welcome visitors to Seminole County Public Schools and put our best foot forward. So kudos to all the students, the teachers, administrators, on a great year. Good luck with the finishing of the assessment, and seeing no further business to.
Oh, we did mention the science award and the history awards.
They were phenomenal.
They were, that's, we'd be criticized, I'm sure, by the curriculum department if we didn't say something about those, because those, the science awards were just unbelievable.
I thought we had done it last month.
International.
Yes, I challenge almost anybody to read the titles of some of those science experiments.
Well, this was the actual award program, and then the history award was a few days after that.
Yep. So thank you to the Teaching and Learning Department for organizing all of those great awards ceremonies.
Absolutely.
Okay, seeing no further business, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.